Please, thank you. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America. To stand one nation. With liberty.
Please remain standing in a moment of silence for all the men and women past present who will protect us and our great country. And please keep in mind the healthcare workers who are still at the forefront of the pandemic. Thank you all. Please be seated if you choose. You can stand up and cheer if you want to. That's, you know. Let's see. We got a crowd today. We got the FinCom and the school committee. So we need to get this side of the warrant out of the way. If we could have a motion to accept the warrant and have Mr. McGinnis stamp cited for us.
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call Stanley?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
And me, yes. I don't think I left anybody out. It's that time of year where we, I get to abdicate the throne. So the first item is the reorganization of the board.
I nominate John Heron for chair.
Could you do that?
Yes, you can.
Okay. Is there a second for that?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to remind you that last year I nominated you for chair and also the rules do allow a chair to make motions and second motions.
Okay. Try and get the pulse of the board. I don't hear anybody else speaking a second. Okay. Would someone like to nominate someone else?
Like to nominate Sean McDonald for chair.
Second?
Okay, for that one, we have a motion and a second. Roll call Stanley?
Discussion, sir. Discussion.
Please.
Mr. Chair and Mr. McDonald, you two have been chair several times. I have not. So I'm asking you two to do the right thing.
Well, I always say to do the right thing. The problem is, the question is, what is the right thing?
Well, I think you should vote for me for chair.
Didn't seem to be a lot of support, John. That's the problem with that.
And did I notice no support from yourself also?
I'm not up for anything.
Yeah, but you didn't, you didn't second my motion.
Right, because I was waiting for somebody else to do that.
But you do, as chair, you can do that also.
Right. But if they're going to vote and you're not going to, you're not going to be, not going to be accepted, then why should I, why should I waste the, the second? Still with the one we have. A nomination and a second for Sean.
Yes.
So let's, Stanley, yes, you said?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Uh, John?
No.
Okay. Sean, you can vote for yourself, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, and me, yes. So.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we nominate David Tattelbaum for vice chair.
Just, just a minute, let me turn.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just want to congratulate Sean and turn the helm over to him. You're in charge, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Gracie. Before we entertain the motion for vice chair, I just want to thank Frank for chairing the board during this crazy year. I know it was shorter than normal and it should have been longer, but thank you, Frank. We appreciate everything that you did.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, take motions for, do I have a motion to nominate anybody for vice chair?
Motion to nominate David Tattelbaum as vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. Any further nominations? Close the nominations. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Heron?
No.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes the affirmative, four one. Mr. Tattelbaum is now the vice chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sean, congratulations, David.
I'd just like to make a, a comment about Frank as well. I think Frank conducts, uh, meetings were fluid, did a really nice job. And congratulations on that, Frank, and thanks for your service and take, take care of us this year.
Well, thank you very much. It was a little struggle at times, but that goes with, that goes with the turf, so.
Okay, six thirty on the agenda. At six thirty-six, we have the annual town meeting warrant review, the annual budget review, and the capital budget review. It's a joint meeting with the finance committee and the school committee. And for those people at home who are watching, if the school committee chair can introduce the members of the committee and staff, followed by the chair of the finance committee, introduce your committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Shannon Jenkins and I have the honor of being chair of the school committee this year after our reorganization shortly before this meeting. My fellow members here are Ms. Kathleen Amaral, Mr. Chris Oliver, Mr. John Nunes, and Ms. Mary Waite, who is now the vice chair. Dr. Bonnie Gifford is with us. Oh, that Mr. Kylie is here as well, and our recording secretary, Ms. Kathleen Jentner, is here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Terry Ham, finance committee. I'll call the meeting to order. We have Gloria Bancroft, vice chair. Brian O'Hare. Jeff Raymond. Adam Silva. New member Bill Bowles. Bob Garvin. Debbie Wiedecoper. Janine Simmons. And I would like to say that Gloria Bancroft will be leaving at the end of the season and we are going to miss her. But given the commitment that she has to service and her role as a town meeting member, I'm sure we'll be seeing her in the future in some form. After she leaves, John Souza will be joining us for the fall season. So, Mr. McDonald, how will we be proceeding with this, this process next? Do you have something in mind?
Well, basically what we're going to start off with is with the annual town warrant review. And then after we go through the review, we'll go through the budget and then the capital, capital budget. But is there, Mr. McGinnis and Dr. Gifford, and I guess Terry, you guys want to say something to start off? So, Mr. McGinnis, you can.
Yeah, that'd be great. I would like to speak for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, go ahead, Terry. I'll let you go first and then we'll hear from Dr. Gifford and then, uh, Mr. McGinnis.
So we, and I'm going to read because I have a few things to say, but I, it will look like I'm making eye, eye contact while I'm reading because of this fancy.
That's always a good thing. Thank you.
Okay. So it's nice to have the opportunity to share our thoughts on the town meeting and the town warrant. I know that most of you have served, served on the finance committee at some point. You know that we report to the town meeting members by making recommendations on warrant articles and by sending out a financial overview. As a former finance committee member, you understand our work. We have asked for guidance from the select board and listened to individual boards and committees on their part of the warrant. As town administration knows, we seek this information to help us prioritize. Per that duty this year, we asked the town administrator as well as individual department heads to supply their primary goals, programs that support their goals and the measurements or metrics they use to develop, to, to judge how successfully they've been in meeting their goals. Our aim was to use this information to figure out if their expenditures were effective and efficient and serving the needs of the community. We ask for this information not to be critical. We think people are doing a good job, but we needed objective information. So I want to start off by saying that, subject to our final review process, which won't be finished until May sixth, the finance committee generally supports the spring town meeting warrant proposal. The departmental submissions we received varied. Some had primary goals, some could call out programs that supported goals. Most did not give metrics to determine the success of their effort. The finance committee understands that in standard municipal practice, measurements or metrics are used to make improvements and services help towns focus their employees and resources on what is important. Metrics that a town might use range from those that are mandatory for legal, safety, or contractual purposes to those that track decrease, increases in efficiency, reductions in complaints, greater savings. Without these metrics, we do the best we can to make the recommendations with the information we have. Fortunately, because of federal and state and aid and good financial management by the town's administration, our concerns earlier in the budget process that a 10% reduction in expenditures might be needed did not materialize. During our discussions and in consideration of future planning, topics such as land use, problem properties, what are your housing, contract negotiations have entered our conversation. We are aware that a master plan process is in place, however, we are not aware of what goals have been met from the existing town plan. Conversations about the cost of services have also entered our discussion. We understand that these are not responsibilities of the finance committee. However, we are wary of making recommendations for short-term spending on the town warrant when we are not aware of long-term plans for some of the above issues that will be facing the town of Dartmouth. We have discussed these concerns with town administration and we do understand that it is difficult to monetize a plan with limited information. We do believe that a refined budget process that is held up to measurable goals will aid the town meeting, the select board, and department heads in prioritizing expenses. Over the past several seasons, over the past several years and in this budget season, the finance committee has heard from the town's administration that expenditures might exceed revenue collected by as early as 2024. In the spirit of working together, we recommend that the select board consider a long-term planning process that would mitigate the effect on the town's tax levy and services, and we're interested in hearing your thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Gifford?
Thank you. What I will say is I'm, I'm very happy Terry mentioned the thoughts about possibly having a 10% cut and all of that. So throughout our entire budget season, we've been very, very cognizant of the difficulties that might arise and made very, very careful choices in the personnel or, or resources, et cetera, that we are recommending. Really is just to maintain what we have had in the past, looking at some of our environments, et cetera. I know we have been very fortunate to be able to have some grant monies as well and will be looking to use that very thoughtfully as we move forward. Our biggest concern, as, as you know, we've talked about this with our various meetings, is of course trying to address the learning gaps that have resulted throughout this pandemic. The social, emotional, and mental health issues that we're going to be struggling with are struggling with and will continue to struggle with. So our focus will continue to be on that as we look to bring folks on board. The nursing situation that we've had to deal with, as well as all the monies that have been spent. Obviously, on the resources, you all see the tents out by the middle school, the various things. But we're, we're very grateful to the town. We know we've had a great relationship for all of these years and look forward to continuing to be able to make those thoughtful decisions that will keep us all moving in the right direction.
Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, thank you. So, you know, in line with Terry and Dr. Gifford, you know, this past year has been trying. I think that everyone can agree on that. But, you know, also, as I mentioned to the select board a few months ago, was really, there were a lot of silver linings that came out of this pandemic. And I think you saw a lot of collaboration and cooperation between everybody in town, not just staff, but departments, committee members. Everyone was committed to moving forward and doing the right thing. And we had a number of staff step up in that regard. And, you know, also in preparation for the budget, there were a lot of unknowns. We, we implemented the non-essential hiring and spending freeze back in March. I thought staff did an exceptional job trying to maintain that throughout the year and continue that. And that resulted in us not having to pursue the 10% budget reduction scenarios that we asked departments to prepare. You know, departments did a fairly good job of preparing those 10% budget reductions. You know, we talked a little bit about this internally. I think 10% sometimes sounds like not a lot of money to eliminate, but I thought a lot of the department heads did an excellent job of articulating the service impact of what a 10% budget cut would look like for the town and what the, what the service reductions would be. So in that regard, like I said, we were able to avoid that and prepare a balanced budget working with Greg Barnes, our finance director, and the FinCom and the department heads for FY22. There's, you know, some notable, some not so notable increases, but nothing to increase the budget overall. We've added some truck drivers in park with just a modest increase from the general revenue of $22,000. The health department has proposed some staffing changes that have no net increase. We've increased the veteran services budget by $35,000 because our veteran service officer has been doing a great job of outreach in providing services to the veterans in the community. And one thing to note with that increase, just about 75% of that gets reimbursed back to the town from the state, so it's really not a $35,000 increase. You saw the building, new building commissioner Joe Braga was before you proposing of the fee increase to go into effect July first. So a part of that fee increase was we're hoping to fund a full-time building inspector position, which we've incorporated in the budget, but the fee increase should more than cover that proposed salary and benefit costs. We also increased the conservation agent hours to the tune of $20,000, but that will come out of conservation commission receipts. This is, is a result of a request for administrative staff, but we felt it was a better value and a better asset to the community to provide more hours to the part-time conservation agent to make that a full-time position. So that's what is being proposed. And then the school has asked for three new positions as part of their budget that they've articulated to the FinCom and us. And we think it's a, a modest improvement for a big gain. So with that, that's the budget. And, you know, we're hoping to move into 22, as Terry had mentioned though as well, where, you know, there's a lot of stimulus money that's available right now. We're looking to, you know, use that money wisely. But, you know, that really is only in effect until FY24. So we will be monitoring the budget continuously, monitoring our revenues, monitoring the state budget just to make sure that we are prepared for any changes that could happen after, in FY24. So we will continue to monitor that and keep you posted.
Okay. Mr. Barnes, would you like to weigh in?
Uh, I, I would like to say that we do have a balanced budget. We did some increases, but in all cases, we attempted to find revenue to pay for those increases. The one area that I want to focus on is the capital. We voted a capital plan for the spring, a total of $8,583,362. $3,985,050 of that is for the enterprise. The rest, $4,598,312 is for the town. Of that, $1,518,000 goes toward the school system. The reason the number is so high is we had voted less in capital during the fall, not knowing the certainty what would be occurring due to the whole COVID situation. With the, so we left about 3.8 million of free cash on the table that we normally would spend the majority of in capital in the fall. Now that things are a little more certain, we know that, for instance, the state is not cutting back or is not recommending a cutback in our state aid. That was a very important variable. Secondly, the fact that the town will be receiving significant American recovery monies. We've, and additionally, concerns about what all these monies, not only will the town be receiving American recovery monies, at a minimum, we expect about 3.3. It could possibly be, depending on what the county does with an allocation that is on our behalf, possibly up to 10 million. But nationally, this will be 350 billion. And we're very worried that as a result of that and the fact that the requirement is to use these monies by 2024. Now, I want to stress, we do not know all the guidelines yet. They have not been released. But our fear is this is going to lead to major contract inflation. And in addition to all the other stimulus money. So we're trying to encourage the, the quick moving forward of shovel-ready projects. We believe that waiting is not going to be in the town's benefit. So we have tried to encourage those who we know have the design and engineering for a project done to, to move forward on them. Similarly, we tried to target those in, in the upcoming recommended capital plan. So again, the, the total amount was $8,583,362. It ranged from new vehicles for the police, part of the replacement cycle, two new motorcycles, stuff for, I'm not going to go through every one you have it. An amount to help with the Peyton Aaron Bridge span design. That could be a major issue in upcoming years. We've already talked about it in the past. That amount, there is no guarantee. We can get state or federal monies for it. The current estimated cost to replace the Peyton Aaron Bridge is $19 million. We have monies for our old Westport Road crossroad intersection design. Going on, we put significant monies toward highway. Normally, we put money, we've been putting monies in addition to the million a year for general road maintenance. We, we were able to put 600,000 of that now. Again, the idea that they can get going now. But we've been also funding the redoing of side streets. And I've been assured by highway, they have the ability to move forward on these in June. So we, we decided to fund three of the side streets for June as opposed to wait for the fall. That was Columbus Street, Puritan Street, and Pilgrim Avenue. Parks, we funded half, for capital, half of the Jones Park. The other half is coming from the CPC. That's for major replacement of their playground over there. We funded Allen Street garage repairs and Jones Park building repairs. We originally had intended to do that in the fall. But given the fact, again, our concerns about the contractor environment out there and the fact that the engineering and design is is almost done for both those projects, we decided to fund them in the spring. For the schools, we funded school technology as we always do, HVAC upgrades, flooring replacement, grease trap replacements, parking lot repaving, high school auditorium AV lighting. Apparently, the, that, that should be a huge improvement going to LED lighting. While it seems like the high school to some was built yesterday, it's actually was built 20-plus years ago. Matter of fact, as of this upcoming fiscal year, that will be the last year of debt service on the, on the school. Which presents an interesting scenario for us because we're still receiving SBA reimbursement in 2023. So we got a ruling from the state that's 1.7 million, which normally would go to reduce what had to be debt excluded as of 2023. It goes in as general revenue. We also funded amounts for interior, exterior painting. Another thing we've been doing, it's not on the capital plan, but we've been working with the schools. There are a lot of digital control systems in the schools for HVAC. And we're hoping that possibly we can use a significant amount of the remaining COVID monies, not American relief back. These are the monies we received last April, possibly to assist in that because my understanding is that those monies can be used for capital as long as they're, for HVAC as long as they're related to COVID. And whereas there are restrictions on how you can use those on the town side in terms of permanent capital. So there's been some discussions there on that. I don't know if we'll be able to do that, but I think that would be a great use for some of those remaining monies. General government, we have, we're going to have to put more money toward the driveway and paving lot. There's monies for energy efficiency. There's monies for change of chart of account, at least on the town side. Obviously, anything we did on the schools, we'd have to have their cooperation. And I want to stress, it would have to be collaborative. But we're putting that money at least to help us on the town side to look at revising some of our chart of accounts. And then we have all the enterprise stuff, a lot of it. Standard stuff, upgrade of the, a number of things involving the sewer treatment facility, continued money toward I and I remediation. One of our biggest things, the biggest item actually on the capital plan is for cellular, cellular conversion of residential water meters. I, I find this to be an exciting expenditure. What this will allow us to do is implement smart metering. We will no longer have to have people go drive by to get readings. It will be conveyed to the town in real time. That will give us several benefits. One of the huge ones is it will allow us, by getting real-time information, we can put alarms and such. If there is any aberrant readings, we'll be able to know. Whereas before we would not. The other great aspect of this, just as the, the town can get this information, so can residents. So they can get a through, through online, they'll be able to view their, their real-time data. We think that will help mitigate potential conflict in terms of debate as to water usage. And they too can, if they see a spike, they're able to ask questions in, in short order. The other advantage of this is it will allow us to go to quarterly billing. Currently, it is not practical for the town to go to quarterly billing without real-time reading of information. The, the problem is, is that currently we, we bill one-sixth of the town at any one time. That is the, the information is conveyed by drive time, drive-by. It does not make sense to, it, it's not practical to be able to, when we go to quarterly, it makes sense to bill everyone at the same time. And we just don't have the ability without greater staffing to be able to do drive-by for the whole town at once. But with real-time information, that, that problem will eliminate itself. So there's a lot of benefits to it. It's not a cheap item. It's 2.4 million. That's 1.7 just for the equipment. Uh that's one point seven just for the equipment. Um uh but we believe it's well worth it. Uh there's other monies uh for uh new solid waste truck they don't last that long. And DCTV one exciting thing will be upgrading um the meeting rooms particularly uh three fifteen. Um for the so the planning will be I think very happy about that. And I also think they'll be doing some stuff also in the regular select board room as well. So that's just a quick preview of the capital.
All right well it took care of one item that's for sure. Um all right thank you Greg appreciate that so basically where we're at now is um. We're at a point where we were. I guess I don't want to say the word fortunate but we were lucky to escape uh draconian uh measures but. Still we have to be on guard for the future so it's like walking on thin ice. You know each step we take we hear a little crack we gotta stop and figure out what we need to do. And uh I know the finance committee has um really kind of a tough job at times. Um and I think at at some point in time um if Ms Ham can um send her item at that. Um. Letter or the that she wrote just now that she read um sent it to Mr McGinnis um on some of the suggestions that she had. And I'm sure Mr McGinnis has already made note of it in future meetings and in past meetings. Um it's something that we can look at. In I guess in developing any kind of financial picture everything we have to rely upon past practices. But we also have to take a look at new stuff and everything's evolving on a day to day basis on a month to month basis so. Um at some point in time um. We'll get it down pat but even then if when we get it down pat there's always something new that's going to happen. They'll make us think and say hey wait a minute why didn't we do it this way? Or why how come why can't you know we'll do it another way so um. With that I know this is something that you know we sit back and 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 take a look at everybody's you know budgets times and whatnot. And one of the things that we one of the things that not so much that I find um in out there. Is that the average citizen really doesn't pay attention to local government unless you know when it comes time to write out that check or when they pay it that's the only time they do. And we have to make the effort we have to make the the um the reason to get this information out as much as possible. We can point to our website we can point to information sent out school department same thing with their information. And you know we're finding new ways especially during this COVID. During this pandemic that to do all this stuff um you know. One of the one of the key things that have happened this year is our online permitting. Um and the. Talking to already a couple of contractors who've used online permitting um they basically said why didn't Dartmouth do this years ago? Um he was uh we had one contractor who had um fifteen permits out there. Uh he had a phone call with the building inspector to talk to him about you know what he needed. And the next day he ended up getting nine of those fifteen permits. Uh and he was I mean he was absolutely tickle pink. Um and so I I think that's part of part of the growth process that everybody's going through so um. One of the things I guess I guess at some point in time Sean uh Mr McGinnis do you want to s. I'll be honest with you I I don't think I I think we we have this when we have a school committee here and when we have the finance committee here. The actual going through some of the warrant articles you know is is really not. I I'll be honest with you um there's no reason for them to be here what I'd like to do is because of the positions they're in and the areas. That we concentrate on the financial pictures of the warrant itself concentrate on the budget. Um talk to the school department about their needs and their school budget. And I I Greg had already basically did most of the capital work so if there was any kind of questions on 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 the capital expenditures we can go through that too so. Um what I like to do is just skip over you know the CPC articles the 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 planning board articles we can deal with that at a you know. Later on in the meeting or at a different time what I want to do is I want to concentrate mostly on the budget itself schedule A. Um with the finance committee. Uh I also want to work with the school department on their budget. So that they can explain how they how they're developing their budget where their priorities are going. Because there are some questions um with the school department and one of them I'll be honest with you is I'll I'll say it right now is the busing. Um where we have a majority of the students are driven to school now. But state requires that you have to have a seat for every student in town no matter whether they take the bus or not. And the question is is whether or not the state is still going to stick to that um and. Does the school department have an idea as to whether or not bus ridership will increase starting in September? If we go through you know if all things being equal and we get back to normal so um. Shannon.
So uh Mr Chair I I appreciate you focusing on the budget issues um if I could ask for a little um sort of consideration. Um the school committee we're actually in the right middle of our meeting and we're just which is fine we're here for however long it takes to talk about our stuff. Um but we are talking with the high school principal about the high school reopening. Um so this to the extent that we can do the school stuff sort of first. Um that would allow us to then get sort of back to that important discussion because. This is very important and we want to be here and present for it but we also want to get that information out. Um and have that discussion about the high school reopening. Um so to the extent that we can start with that I would we would very much appreciate it so that we're not till midnight.
Um maybe I don't know we'll see. Yeah I don't I don't I don't see why a problem with that I mean we can we can go along with that um. So that um Shannon Dr Gifford um and Mr Kylie if um you guys want to talk about your budget uh how it's developing. Um and when you intend to have your hearings uh for the budget the budget hearings. And what you're looking for in the way of additions and where your focus is on um. I guess I don't want to say post pandemic but hopefully it's hopeful post pandemic.
Yeah we'll turn that over to Mr Kylie but I will note been there done that um we've had our budget hearing um and our budget vote. Um uh because of the I think the finance committee timeline but Mr Kylie um can talk about our budget.
Thank you Dr Jenkins so uh you know it's it's a difficult thing to budget for the unknown of course. Um I think that we would never have been able to accomplish what we have uh without the federal funding. Uh the you know that's come through both the town you know the towns portion of the federal funds. Uh you know has helped support us through this process as well as the grants that were given directly to the schools and we've. We've spent um you know nearly uh two hun- two million dollars on pandemic related expenses. To be able to do what we've been doing so both through the through our process where we've been hybrid this year and then. Moving to um you know full back in person so it's been very expensive. Of um you know just. Briefly to to you know to speak to what our goals are moving forward. There's a great need to be able to address um the loss the learning loss and the social and emotional well being of students through this. Um and we will have to focus on that that's going to take a significant amount of additional resources. Besides um you know what we have planned in this budget fortunately I think the federal government has um you know has provided resources for the next few years to be able to do that. And our plan would be to address that through those sources so. Our budget proposal is basically a bare bones try and do what we are currently you know we're doing pre pandemic. And hoping that we can um you know maintain the level of service. Uh the additional needs will be addressed hopefully with the with the grant funding. Uh you know things like Mr McDonald you mentioned transportation. It's been it's been a challenge all year you know we we cut the ability to um you know transport kids in half basically which is why. There was no other op you know there was no other option but to go hybrid uh and obviously the space in the classroom so. We we've been dealing with that all year what we did see as we've returned to full remote. And you know we've been back now for a little bit with the elementary students and we're coming back with the middle school students is that we are getting more people. Deciding to put kids back on buses. Um I think that's a positive trend I hope it continues. I hope we see as the middle school begins to operate um beginning Wednesday. That we'll see more and more families choosing to go that route. Part of it might be the fact that there's they're gonna have to sit there in traffic if if that's going to be the trend long term. Uh to be dropping off and picking up their kids so hopefully you know we can honestly we can probably get the kids some faster. Um if they were are able to put the students on buses and of late we've seen very few close contacts of any COVID. Covid nineteen positive individuals uh related to busing uh or anywhere else in the schools of late so. You know it's it's definitely a positive trend. We um hope that continues with the high school when we reopen um you know which will be in the next few weeks and. And next year uh you know our hope is to sort of reopen in a different model with less physical distancing. And uh you know still some precautions in place I'm sure but uh you know hopefully we'll be more back to normal.
Well whatever normal is.
Yeah.
Well because normal took a real curve in the last thirty three hundred sixty five days that's for sure.
Uh Mr Chair if I can follow up on that I would be remiss if I don't do my broken record routine but um about maybe I don't know two years ago it might have been Mr Kylie. Uh the town gave us money through capital planning to do a building planning. Um a building and infrastructure needs and you know in line with Ms Ham's sort of comments about big picture items. Um we have significant building needs. Um you know part of that in this pandemic shown through many of our classrooms are undersized for modern learning. And I can remember way back when hearing how much more space do you need you know thinking how much more space do you need put a desk and a teacher and it's fine. Well the pandemic showed us that we need more space and that has been part of our problem. Um and some of our buildings are quite old and I really do think that um as a town you know nineteen million dollars for the Peyton Aaron Bridge. Um I almost had a heart attack when we saw that capital plan and what the costs of those schools were. Um we really need to have some serious conversations and also I think to your point uh Mr Chair. Um getting the information out so people are aware of all of the needs that we have and thinking seriously. About how this town is going to address the serious capital big capital um projects that that we do need to address.
Well I understand regarding the um you know regarding the building needs I mean your your newest building is twenty years old. After that you're you're talking in your sixties. You know you're talking a sixty year old uh elementary school uh used to be or what started out as the middle school. And then you have two buildings that are over seventy years old you know two elementary schools so really if you if you're taking a look at it. Your three elementary schools in town have a aggregate of two hundred years in age. So I mean that's that's something that needs to be taken a look at long term and 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 the question is. Part of that long term is where is the population going to be and where you're going to centralize these schools? To keep the reduction down in your bus routes and also to keep the reduction down in in family travel. Because one of the things that you know you constantly see on social media um and not so much by the parents. It's by other drivers saying you know going by a school at at in the morning or in the evening uh in the afternoon. Um is somewhat of a nightmare because of the traffic uh overflow into the streets. Uh just going out to uh just driving by DeMello uh at uh let out time I mean you know. The line's all the way in and it's all the way on Dartmouth Street too so um it it is a significant um it is a significant problem. And it's something that does need to be addressed on a long term basis uh Mr Tattelbar.
All right quick quick note I I don't think there's any tougher job in our town than to make decisions for the school department. Because you're once you make a decision it's going to change the next morning and I congratulate all of you for a really tough job. I also think that I also think that uh we all had to take a deep breath. Uh this past year twelve months just to hold on and I think we made it through well because we were we took the the right attitude. Uh we now have in front of us a master plan uh looking forward a long term uh budgeting looking forward. Uh many of us on this this meeting have spent um uh years on the finance committee we understand how that works. From my perspective after three years now on the select board and many years in the finance. There's no better place to find out more information that this town can use than from our finance committee. And I think that uh last year was I was prepared to push as hard as I could last year but that is was that's now gone. But uh um we we need to collaborate on a regular basis throughout the twelve months with finance whether it be on major spending or on long term spending. Uh so that we can make better decisions and of course involve in the school department. Uh we need to take a better advantage their advisory well let's let's get some advice. Whether it be long range planning schools um or um or bridge projects or DPL whatever it is and I I I'm. I hope I can persuade my colleagues to become uh as active as we can possibly be. To uh collaborate with finance to make sure that we're staying on top of this from from uh from the get go.
It only benefits it only benefits the town is everybody talks so it's not you know that's just that's just a given um. So we got a we got pretty much a synopsis of the school department budget and where their focus is going to be attention really it's on you know. As much as the focus is on education it's also on well being. And I think with uh with that um that also brings itself into some other. Not only you looking for the well being of of the student but you're also looking at the well being of the parents. Um you know everybody has really gone through um I just a in each of their own way different. Aspect of of this pandemic and uh some people have have struggled mightily. Some have struggled somewhat and some haven't really struggled at all. Um but I I think what what it is is that um the town is is has collectively um. Done a pretty decent job coming out of this and um you know you can't thank everybody. I I guess the only way you can say is you you thank the people that are running the departments the people in the departments the parents the the citizens in town. Um because it is a collaborative effort um to try to do this so um. Budget wise what do we how do you want to handle the budget review Mr McGinnis Terry? I don't I'm not sure I think maybe I think instead of going through each individual department budget because you've already done that. And we don't we don't want to revisit that over again because I don't want to take um weeks and months of meetings and try to cram it into. You know uh half hour forty five minutes I think basically what we want to do is take a look at. Uh get a brief syna- get a synopsis of of what you got what the finance committee has been looking at. Uh what the goals were the finance committee along with the town and how to mesh that into basically coming up to with the budget that you have.
That's that's what so that's why I read what I read to say that we have in general supported the warrant. So there really isn't a need for us to go through it and I think when Sean and Greg talked they shared some of the particulars of of the changes that were there so. We haven't finished our process yet we won't be finished until May sixth because this meeting was scheduled a little bit earlier so um. I am wholeheartedly with you no need to read the the warrant I would be interested in hearing from select board members on thoughts. David just said that it would be helpful to perhaps meet more often I don't know what other people think I know the finance committee. Would like to see more in the way of um goals uh objective measures of of what's uh in the budget. So that it there's some help for future finance committee members in making recommendations to the town meeting. Um and we know that's you know your your planning process I I'm hearing from Shannon some uh concerns about the school department. There's certainly some benefit to planning long term there um I think in general the finance committee is just concerned as I said about. Short term decisions made for the warrants in the spring and the warrants in the fall. Out without a context of some of the bigger concerns that are. out, without a context of some of the bigger concerns that are, that are in place. Even though I know exactly what you said is true, that things do change and, you know, we have to be prepared for things that are unexpected. We really are feeling like there's a lack of, of planning and there's a lack of objective measures of effectiveness of what's going on. We don't have the, the, um, authority. It's not our role, you know, but, um, we, and you know this, cause you're on the finance committee. When you're trying to make a recommendation about something, it'd be great to have some context to, to look at, um, and we're lacking that. So.
Well, I think part of, I think one of the things that we're going to strive for this year on the select board is I think we're going to have, we're going to start looking at departmental planning. Um, and, and that was something that, um, you know, I, I mean, we asked the school committee to do a five-year, um, capital plan. Um, there's no re, and we asked the DPW to do the same thing. There's no reason why we can't ask all the other departments to come up with that. And also with the target as to where they want to be in five, ten years. And I think that's something that I believe, um, Greg, um, the board and Mr. McGinnis, um, all seven of us can come down and, and figure out something, at least to kind of give a, an idea and, and to all the department heads as to, you know, what you want to do so that we can use this as a tool, you know, for future planning. So that we can see where these, you know, what they want to be doing in five years, what they want to be doing in ten years, you know, and, and look to see how we can achieve, achieve each situation. It's probably not going to take, um, a short time in doing it. I think it's going to be a little bit longer because, you know, we're dealing, because government, for all intents and purposes, is more reactionary. Um, and it's, it's at the moment versus reaction, I mean, pro-action. So I think what we have to do is kind of shift that focus a little bit to the more of the pro-action side. Um, and it's the same thing when you're dealing with the master plan. I mean, it's great. You have a master plan and then, you know, as everybody said, once the master plan is done, it sits on the shelf and then we talk about it in another ten years. And what happened to the old master plan? Oh, it's right here. Then anybody look at it? Uh, no. So, I mean, there are some things that have been done, like the harbor master, the harbor plan. Um, there have been some things that we've implemented in the harbor plant, so that we are going with that way. So there is a shift in the way the town is operating and how it's becoming a proactive versus a reactive. Um, and it's not going to, you know, three hundred and fifty years, um, it's going to take probably a little bit more to, to shift to that end, to that side. But I think, um, it's something that getting the right people, getting the, you know, getting the, and, and, and getting it done, I think is, is something that we can all look at. Shannon?
I just want to respond to Terry's question about, you know, whether or not we should meet more frequently and, you know, of y'all, y'all are great people. Uh, but it's a little bit of a delicate balance for us on the school committee, right? Because we're ballpark half of the budget, right? So half of what you talk about is not under our control, right? It's not our responsibility. Um, and so in a certain sense, I do think that our, our joint meetings are useful. Um, but I'm, but I'm not sure that, you know, the school committee wants to be involved, I think, in questions about sort of general process. But the harbor master plan, that's not us, right? Um, it's good you're planning. It helps the finance committee makes decisions about the, the, the harbor masters budget. But we don't need to be involved in conversations about the harbor master because that is not our statutory area of responsibility, right? We, in that area, we are, you know, no more than an, an average citizen, right? Um, so that's, I don't want to say we don't want to have joint meetings, but on the other hand, to Terry's question, need to meet more frequently, I, I think for my committee, the answer might be, I don't think so.
I don't think anybody wants to meet for the sake of meeting, but Shannon, to your point on the Paden Aaron Bridge expense, somehow that rose to the top. So it would be great. I, I'd love to be able to explain that, but I can't as a finance committee member. I can't tell you how it did. And there are other things like that, that rise to the top. And I'm not sure how it happens, but that's exactly what I'm talking about. I know that there are other communities that have a plan that kind of uses some guidance to say, this is what's important. I think the capital, uh, improvement committee does a great job of, of prioritizing. And they have a five-year plan. You can kind of see how it moves through. I don't see how the rest of the budget works in that way. So the, and it's.
I'm not, I'm not talking about what goes to the capital improvement committee, right? Our school buildings aren't even on that plan. Not even there. You don't have the money for it. We're not going to have the money for it.
It'd be great to have a, a plan or a process in place where people could weigh in on what was important to the community.
For big picture items, but for things like day-to-day expenses, those are not, you know, what are the metrics for the harbor master? That's not us. I don't know, Mr. Noons, you have some thoughts on that?
Mr. McDonald. I, I think, uh, Ms. Jenkins, to your point, I think there's a lot of day-to-day that I think there could be more, you know, possibly collaboration between the town and the school. Not that they're not, the school's been great to work with. But, you know, when we talk about economies of scale and, and trying to centralize some functions, you know, sometimes it can sound to little things like sharing staff to accomplish like the same tasks on both sides. So I think when we evaluate that, we look at better ways to utilize staff town-wide that may be associated with the school or on the town side. I can tell you from, you know, just this past year, because of COVID, you know, we've had to lean on technology and the school's IT staff have been instrumental in helping us put our remote town meeting together. So, you know, that is a step in the right direction. And then if I, you know, meeting regularly to talk about how we can collaborate more together to get more bang for our buck, so to speak, uh, I think would be beneficial.
That, that operational level is not the school committee. That's you and Mr. Kylie and Mr. Barnes, which I think you guys have a great relationship.
And Dr. Gifford.
Want to get involved in that.
And who, Mr. Noons, I think you wanted to speak and I'll get to Stanley next.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, just going back to, you know, talking about capital and schools and buildings and everything else, I mean, a few years ago, four years ago, five years ago, the town was gracious enough to give us some money. And we did an evaluation of our school buildings and everything else and came up with, you know, I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, uh, you know, we had an outside firm come in and take a look at all our buildings and, you know, what were we going to need and what were, what would we have to do? And, you know, the cost is astronomical. You know, looking at, you know, either adding on to, either adding on to buildings because we need to put the programs in or if you can find the land, building, you know, new schools, which is an exorbitant cost also. So, you know, keep that in mind. That, again, you talk about that capital project and we've talked, you know, a master plan sitting on a back shelf for ten years type of deal. We've done, you know, we did that and, you know, we've talked about it a few times. And yeah, that's something that somewhere down the line, we're going to have to bring to the forefront and, uh, see exactly what we're going to be able to do.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholson?
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Noons, land is at a premium, as we know in this small town. Um, and, and to utilize land that the town owns is, it should be our priority without a doubt.
I agree.
And, um, anyway, moving forward and, and I, I think, uh, Terry, uh, I, I enjoy your thoughts about meeting more often. I think the select board and, and the finance committee should meet maybe quarterly, maybe less than that. Um, so, um, or, and, and just get to the nitty-gritty, but I'm, I'm really kind of curious. So this is, this is a question as to the entire finance committee. Um, besides the bridge issue, um, and not spending money unwisely, um, are there any glaring, glaring items that when you, we're just not looking at? Are there, are there, are there monies available under, under a rock somewhere that we haven't found? Have we, have we made every single attempt that we can to find as much monies? Uh, uh, and, and I don't know if that's the truth, but I, I mean, with the members that are, that are on this, this board, we've got a retired CPA and, and business people and retirees that really work hard and, and, and bring an awful lot to the town. I'd like to know, um, they don't have to, you don't have to tell me tonight, but I'd like to know at some time though, when we meet, uh, with, with the select board, come up with a few, um, answers for me. And not me personally, but, you know, with, to the select board.
Well, I can respond to that feeling. You, I think you're, you're probably being rhetorical when you talk about a draft full of money. But, um, but what we, what we see is a lack of planning. We see a lack of prioritizing. We see a lack of being able to, to know whether or that is more important. What are the priorities? It's not about, I think, and that's why I made it clear that it's not about people being critical of what's being provided. Every single person who presented in our budget hearings presented the information that they had. Um, I think it, it's not about, I think people feel like people are doing the best they can. It's, it's more about long-term planning. What is the plan in place for some of the things that I referenced? Um, some of the problem properties that are in the wind right now, the, the, uh, work that needs to be done for the forty-hour housing. Even when you look at all of the contracts that were, um, settled and, and future contract negotiations, what is the process for planning for that and how do we know? Um, I think we have good financial management in this town. And I think, as I said, that's why we're, part of why we're in the, the position that we're in. Um, I see another, uh, finance committee member though, would like to say something I want to ask. Beppi?
Uh, thank, thank you. And I don't know if this is inappropriate for me to jump in, but I, I, I have to say it. For, from my perspective, it's been interesting to be on a finance committee where your responsibilities are on the expense side, not to even talk about the income side. So, uh, uh, select board member Nicholson, how, it's really interesting to me because I would love to get, dig in to the income side as well as the finance side, the expense side. And one of the things we've raised questions of, or we've talked about is we, we hear about the, the solar, uh, opportunities. I have no idea what the revenue opportunities, if not, um, constraints are. I certainly know on the, on the, on the taxes, the property taxes, but it would be really fun to dig in onto what the what-ifs of are out there in terms of potential new revenue sources. And we've been very impressed with, with, with what this, with, uh, Sean has done in, in telling us what the select board goals are and include the, included our expanded economic growth development and redevelopment efforts. So it'd be really interesting to sort of say the what-if side of if we did X, Y, and Z, what would it do to revenues? And that would enable us to do some things on expenses. So just saying it's an interesting aspect.
Exactly my point. Um, and I think we should get to it.
Well, I think, I think what's, what, this conversation has to be continued, that's for sure. And I think part of it is, is the select board. Um, you know, everybody wants us to lead, but we're limited in what we can do. But, uh, if we, if we need to lead, then we'll lead. Um, and if that means we have to sit down and, and come up with new, uh, a new way or an alternate way of, of, of dealing with things on, on a, on a, on a planning basis, then we'll do that. We'll lean on, uh, Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Barnes. Um, and even Mr. Kylie, um, and, uh, Dr. Gifford, you know, we'll, we'll lean on them and we'll lean on the department heads. Um, you know, we, we have some pretty good people that work in this town. And, you know, I think when we have, when we talk to them, we can come up with some pretty interesting things. Um, whether or not, you know, we'll be able to find that little pot of gold, uh, you know? Or maybe there's something else. Maybe it's just a little satchel here and there. Um, so, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to, um, this was scheduled for an hour. We're just a little bit over it. Uh, right now, we do have a hearing at seven-thirty and seven-forty. I know the school committee is, um, is, is begging to get into, uh, the high school, the high school aspect of opening up the high school. And, um, believe me, I want them to, uh, do that on, uh, for the sake of the parents and for the students. So, uh, what I'm going to do is I'm going to end this joint meeting. Um, I will say that, um, we'll probably meet with the school committee again, uh, in maybe in another six months, uh, to see how we're doing. Um, at the, at the end of the start of the school system and the school year. Uh, I'd like to schedule a meeting with the finance committee sometime, probably, um, I want to say early September. Um, so that, uh, believe it or not, we'll start the process of doing the FY twenty-three budget. Uh, so, uh, with that, I'd like to thank everybody for their participation. Um, and, uh, we'll give it a couple of minutes for everybody to sign off and, uh, stay safe, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And there's the screen slowly disappears.
The number of people.
Uh, Sean, I have, uh, Buddy Baker Smith's on. I don't know if you want him to just review the media preservation article item.
Yeah, um.
Do it after the hearings.
Yeah, the hearing shouldn't take that long. So we'll, we'll handle the hearings right now. Buddy, if you can hold on, will be greatly appreciated. Um, okay, what I have is a seven-thirty hearing. Um, it is now seven-thirty-six. Seven-thirty, Percy's Place has an application for an all alcohol license indoor and outdoor on the patio. So I'm going to open up the hearing. Hearing is opened. Uh, Sean Heston, I believe, is here for that.
Yes, I am.
Uh, we have a myriad of Shans here. Okay, Mr. Heston, if you can just describe what you want to do besides serving alcohol.
Well, we, we, we got approved for the permanent outdoor seating area, which has been going great when we can get some nice warm weather. And we just want to make the next move to be able to sell, you know, mimosas and Bloody Marys to customers that have been requesting those from years, for years from us. So we're ready to do that.
Nothing like a good mimosa with pancakes, I guess. Um, okay, um, any of the board members have any questions on this? Is there anybody in the public who have any questions in favor of this? Anybody in public have any negative comments about this? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. Hearing is closed. Members, what would you like to do?
Motion to accept.
Herron makes a motion to accept, seconded by?
Me.
Mr. Tattelbaum. I can tell by the little grunt.
No.
Don't, don't, all right, you guys don't start grumbling, okay?
I was silent. I was silent on that one.
Pronounce. Okay. Motion made by Mr. Herron, seconded by Mr. Gracie. On the motion, roll call, vote. Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Care votes in favor. Good luck, Mr. Heston.
Thank you very much, you all.
Joey, I'll take one of those mimosas right now.
All right, we got two minutes before our next hearing. Um.
You gotta wait two minutes.
I don't know, Buddy Baker's going to take a little longer than two minutes. I know Buddy. I love Buddy, but Buddy's not short. Um, meeting sched, meeting schedule. Now we can knock out very quickly.
It's good to me. I'm good.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Great.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept. Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Herron. On the motion, roll call, Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Care votes in favor. By the way, gentlemen, I'm just going down my row here of pictures, so. So there's no, no, uh, no order of preference. All right, I have seven-forty. We have a hearing on the sail off, transfer a license only. I'm going to open up the hearing. I believe, Mr. Silverstein?
Uh, I am here, but it, unable to start my video. It says it's being prevented.
Well, that's a, sometimes that's a good thing, Steve.
I understand. I have a good background though.
You should. Um, all right, uh, Mr., so I'm assuming you're looking to gra, to, um, hold the license of the sail off, correct?
Yes, um, here we are, actually. Doesn't let it very well. Uh, so, uh, I have executed a lease, uh, with Dave Nolan, the owner of South Wharf, and, uh, we're going to, uh, operate the sail off.
Okay. David, you have, um, would you like to say anything?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, uh, I'm listening. I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, Mr. Herron. All right. So basically, um, you're looking to do somewhat similar to the operation that was there before alcohol. Weighing heavily mostly on the food, quality of the food.
Yeah, it's, um, you know, it'd be of the caliber of, uh, food and operations that, um, we've come to be known for. Uh, it will continue to be a, a village taverny-type. Uh, it will continue to be a a village taverny type feel. Um, with uh, you know, similar food, but you know, we hope uh upgraded uh burgers, fish and chips, lobster rolls. Um, and uh, that's the plan.
Nice.
Okay, uh, Mr. Herron.
Is there an anticipated opening date?
Uh, the opening date would be early fall.
Thank you.
All right, on the hearing, is there anybody in the audience who are is in favor of this? Is there anybody in the audience who is against this? I want to close the hearing. It's closed. Board, pleasure.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by?
John Herron.
Mr. Herron, thank you. On the motion, roll call, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Approved. Congratulations, Mr. Silverstein and Mr. Nolan. You have a tenant now.
Uh, thank you very much.
All right.
Yes, thank you, board.
All right. All right. Melissa Haskell. You're next. Come on down.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I sent a letter to this select board requesting that town meeting be done as a Zoom uh virtual town meeting um again. Um, again, uh, in the interest of keeping the public safe while the vaccines are being rolled out and people are are getting some immunity to the to the uh COVID nineteen virus. I think the past two town meetings have gone um reasonably well, and I would expect this town meeting to go as well, if not slightly better, because we take away learnings every time we do this. Um, to make them run a little bit more smoothly, and I've gotten a lot of very positive feedback um about the meetings and and the appreciation for our efforts to keep our town meeting members safe. So I am requesting that the June first town meeting uh once again be a Zoom town meeting.
Okay, June first is a Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
All right, um. One of the benefits of having the Zoom is we had better attendance as compared to previous town meetings. So that's very good. Any any suggestions? I know we did last annual town meeting on a Saturday. Any suggestions about moving it on a Saturday versus a Tuesday? Because this is usually a day meeting. And people um who are working, need to work. I wonder if we'll have a better, more of a better, wider attendance if we do it on a Saturday versus uh, June first, looking at June one, two, three, four, five, six, five, I believe it is. Yeah, June fifth.
Yeah. Uh, my thoughts on that are that um, the meeting is generally scheduled, and I think people plan for the meeting to happen on a particular date. That was some of the feedback that we received when we moved the last meeting is that people are planning on it on a particular day. It's not clear to me if families are getting together. Um, it is getting into celebration of uh graduation and the like, and so I'm not sure if families are getting together at this point to do that. I know some families have been vaccinated and are comfortable uh meeting, even if they're not comfortable being out with the general public. So that would be my my thought on it. I'm wondering if the good weather would preclude people from wanting to spend the day on a Saturday on Zoom, doing the town's business.
That's, I mean, that's the only drawback. Um, even if it's a good day on Tuesday, if people are home, people, you know? Believe me, I'd rather be out in my garden and my uh, my lawn than sitting in a meeting, so. Um, but I I can under- I can understand that. Uh, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Yes, we'll see you do on a great meeting there. In-house or uh Zoom? Thank you. Um, any consensus from other towns um uh as to what day, um, if they're going to keep up Zoom and and if they do, what day they're going to choose this? And is there any consensus about Saturday uh being better than a Tuesday uh uh around the around the state?
I've seen other towns keep it on the weekday. I certainly know another town I represent is doing it during the week as well.
Yeah, I I'm a member of the Massachusetts Moderators Association and and um, there has been discussion about whether or not one gets better attendance on a weekend versus a weekday and um, I think it's somewhat split. I think it's each town has their own sort of uh customs around town meeting. And I think people just want to know when it's going to happen so that they can plan for it, and and that's the benefit I see to to not changing the date um that.
Also, uh, there is a bit, you're going to get more people uh either day uh because it's Zoom, I believe, than than if not. So that is a plus already. And we want to take the chance on a Saturday, it could it could be different because it's such an unknown. So it could be, I can keep it on Tuesday because it's a it's a, we pretty much know what it's going to be.
Right, I mean, is it is in the charter for a full day Tuesday? We've been doing it that way all along. It just happens we're just not in the same room together, but.
Well, I mean, last year was just, you know, talk about throwing a monkey wrench into the into the gears, so that was just the something entirely different. So we have a little bit more control this year than than we did last year, that's for sure. All right, so the request is to have the uh, the annual town meeting, the the ju- the June annual town meeting on July first.
No, on June first, sir.
First, sorry. Um. Tuesday, June first, remote, uh, starting at nine o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Um. Board's pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion to um to authorize uh the town moderator to call the meeting for June first, two thousand twenty-one, spring annual town meeting um at nine AM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, discussion?
All right, discussion.
Doesn't the warrant say at this point says ten AM?
I think you're looking at the special.
Is that what it is? Okay.
June fifteenth is at ten AM. That was the alternate.
Really?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I got online.
Um. Okay, the only thing, one thing that did stick out to me, and I'm just, I'm trying to get back to that page, which is the cover page for the warrant. Um. Getting there.
I think it did. I thought it did say nine, and I could be wrong.
The spring warrant is nine AM. And then it says the backup time was uh.
Okay.
Um. With the with with the highly possible of Zoom bombing, uh, is it wise to have the information on the warrant itself with the password? Should that be on a separate piece of paper going to town meeting members so that it's not published?
I I believe that it's that it's only gone out on the warrants that were sent to town meeting members in the past, and the warrant that was posted on the website did not include that information.
Okay, because right now I'm looking at the information, so I'm just wondering if just if that, please change that before it goes out.
Yeah.
We've already been, we were in, we had a charter commission that we were Zoom bombed uh at the beginning. Um, it was rather interesting to be perfectly honest with you. So, uh, okay, on the motion, uh, roll call, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Yes.
Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Herron.
Yes.
Mr. Gracie.
Yes.
Chair votes in favor.
Can I add, may I add one more thing?
Oh, what?
Uh, we are planning to have a practice session on Tuesday, um, the twenty-fifth of May to enable those uh newer town meeting members to practice, or some of our existing town meeting members who would like to uh refresh um themselves as to how to participate in a Zoom town meeting. Um, so we will be sending that out to town meeting members as well. I'm guessing it will probably be in the evening on uh the twenty-fifth, so we'll we'll look to schedule a time for that.
Okay, good. I think.
We'll be encouraging people to sign in early.
We will be encouraging people to sign in early, and I'm also going to um speak with Peter Chase at DCTV. Um, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Savastana, because um one of the things that has been extraordinary at these past uh Zoom meetings, Zoom town meetings, is the support that we have gotten from from um the technology um professionals, both at DCTV and throughout the town at the um from members who um work IT, people who work for the for the schools and um for town hall, and they've been extraordinary um in terms of supporting us. So um, I always want to make sure that I thank them, but they had some new ideas about how we might do check-in better, so I think we're going to try and explore those. Um, as well as encourage people to to sign in early, because they can sign in and just, you know, leave their computer on while they're waiting for the town meeting to start.
Does Zoom Zoom itself have recommendations on how to uh cut the cut the the time down?
The the difficulty is we're trying to, we're trying to um check people in, and part of the process that I have to certify to is that we um are, I can recognize the the town meeting members and that we have a a process by which we are not letting people who are not town meeting members in, and so the town clerk and her team have been helping us to do that, but it's um you know, we're checking in one person at a time, and so I know that it does, and I know that they had some ideas about how they might do it differently this time. Um, I think we'll go ahead and try those, um, but I want to circle back with Mr. Chase, who is the one who really leads the technology charge for us.
Yeah, it sounds good. And I'm sure that'll be also listed on ti- um, DCTV.
Yes.
Also the town website as to the practice session and whatnot, so.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Melissa.
You.
Of course.
All right, next we have uh Amy DePietro, the Director of the Council on Aging regarding opening, May. Amy.
Hi, good, I'm doing well. Good evening. Thanks so much for having me. We are so excited to announce that we are going to start the reopening process um this coming Monday, May third. It'll be gradual and limited. And um, pre-registration is going to be required for any of the classes and programs that we'll be holding. Um, we're going to have to keep a limit on the guests. And um, our classes will be held either outside, weather permitting, or in a large room where we can continue um to maintain social distancing. Um, we will assess the changes every, probably just about every week, um following guidelines from the CDC, the governor, and the local board of health. So uh, just a few of the programmings we are looking to bring back will be Mondays. We have our osteo exercise class at ten fifteen. Our art class will be resuming on Tuesdays from nine to twelve. Um, CAM's fitness classes on Wednesdays from nine to nine forty-five. And then our Zumba Gold class, I believe, at ten thirty. We'll be offering a widow and widower support group on Fridays from ten thirty to twelve. And we also have a new French class, so if anybody's looking to learn to speak French or um meeting with other people who do speak French, that will be offered starting on May nineteenth. I believe it's going to be twice a month. Um. This Friday, we do have an outdoor tailgate party. We're keeping our fingers fingers crossed that the forty percent chance of rain is still going to hold off. Um, so we're looking to to bring everybody back um slowly in a safe and um healthy manner.
Excellent. Well, I'm I'm sure it's a long time coming, and I'm I'm sure many of the clients and and the participants are looking forward to coming back, so. Mr. Tattlebaum.
All right, Quimby, uh, in consideration about people who have gotten vaccines or have not, have you, your policy, uh uh, if at all, what you're considering?
Um, so we are going to, when when people come in, we will have everybody sign in through our My Senior Center, which is how we we track on people, so we'll be able to use that for contact tracing. We are going to attach um an attestation form that they don't have a fever, that they are agreeing to to our rules, um, hand sanitizer and what uh um and whatnot. Um, I did speak with um Chris Michaud this morning, whether we could ask, we can't deny people access or entry to the building, whether they've had a vaccine or not, but we would like to know who's been vaccinated, just so we have an idea moving forward, really, how many seniors um have been vaccinated. So I do think we'll add um either a yes or no to that form.
Thank you.
I think maybe if you, I know um yes or no would be the great thing. I think maybe you should just add a third, prefer not to answer. Because that may not want to answer.
Sure.
Which is fine. I mean, I, it's one of the things, um you know, I I mean, I have my shots. I'm I'm done. Um, and but I'm not I'm not of the ilk that you have to have your vaccinating vaccination passport per se, whatever that, whatever they want to do, so. Uh, so, okay, so that's, we're looking, I tell you, that's, eh, this is sort of like a Mayflower kind of springing up, things are opening up, which is good, and this is a good sign, so um, looking forward to seeing how um, how participation is going, maybe sometime um maybe sometime one of our meetings in May, towards the end of May, uh, you can kind of give us an an update on how the opening went and uh this is kind of a quick follow-up, whether it's, it can be, and that can be done by letter, too, so.
Sure, would be my pleasure.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, next on the agenda is a Community Preservation Committee Annual Report. Mr. Baker.
Hello there. Good to see you all.
Hey, buddy.
Buddy.
All right, buddy, you got the floor.
All right, so um, I don't know if the board's pleasure, I have an annual report. I don't know if you all have had a chance to look at that. Have any questions about that? Um, and then I didn't know if you wanted to touch base on uh the warrant. Uh, we have the, in terms of the warrants, we have one project warrant, which is um funding for the Jones Park playground equipment uh replacement. Um, and then the uh, the other two are housekeeping warrants. Uh, one, making sure that we meet our uh requirement for the set aside of um of CPA funds for the different um accounts that we have, have to minimally either set aside or commit to a project ten percent of expected revenue uh for each of the three purposes. Um, right now, we only have one uh project, so we're going to set aside for the other two purposes, and then our our annual budget, which is typically thirty-five thousand. So I don't, yeah.
Just to, just quickly go through the current projects that are being funded by the CPC that are in progress right now. I know it's part of your report. Uh, through the historic preservation, the affordable housing, and then the recreation and open space.
Yes. Um, so in the historic preservation in the report, um we have the Aiken House, um, which is um uh, we've had a couple of grants award there. Um, they're down to, I think there's about nine hundred dollars left in the final award for that project. Um, we checked with uh Diane Gilbert, DHPT, um, and they have plans to expend that money. So I think that project's going to close in terms of the CPA funding um pretty shortly, I think. Um. And the animal pound, uh, the town pound, um, that project, we are going to close out. Um, the only thing remaining is, as we've written, the board um is to pursue a preservation restriction. Um, there is an outstanding balance uh in that project um that we'll recapture um if the select board chose to go forward with a preservation restriction. Uh, the funding of the restriction, uh, purchase of the restriction and the endowment would have to go through a um, um, go back to town meeting, so that project, we expect to close up. And that is also true of the Russell Garrison. Um, the uh, the only thing left there is a preservation restriction. Parks and Recreation Board um has voted to pursue that. But again, um, no existing money in that, any unexpended money in that grant can't go towards that. It needs to go, that needs to go back to town me- uh, town meeting, so. Actually, both the Animal Pound and Russell Garrison were closing out. They're complete in terms of the uh grants that uh and the expenditures. Um, and the Aiken House should be done this summer. Um, I think it's just a nominal amount of money that um Diane has to um, has plans to commit um more to do, I think, with signage and things like that.
Affordable housing?
Yes, affordable housing program. Um, so we have um three outstanding projects or grants. Two of them are um kind of a revolving. Um, one is the Housing Rehab Loan Program, which we have capitalized, I think, three times over the course of the CPA. Um. Um, and uh, the town administers that uh, program, um, as loans get repaid or houses are sold and the loan funds are recaptured to go back into that fund. Um, has not been a lot of activity on those, uh, in that program, but um, we were, have met with uh, Cody Hadad, um, who is looking at the kind of the history and kind of utilization of the program and actually has a proposal that he wants to bring to the CPC about, um, how that revolving loan fund can get better use, um, in the town. The Affordable Housing Trust is another, um, um, this is uh, the housing trust that the Select Board uh, administers, um, and so this is a, a, a fund that we have capitalized with CPA funds with the, it's the Select Board's um, discretion about utilizing it for the purposes of affordable housing. In the past, um, the town has used it for um, a buy-down of mortgage. So, families can, uh, who meet eligibility requirements can purchase homes that are then, um, uh, maintained uh, as affordable housing, um, in perpetuity. Um, that's been a, they've had a couple, uh, one or two, uh, it's been a, a challenging program for the town, um, basically trying to make the, um, uh, housing price limits of the program that are set by DHCD and the income requirements all work. Um, there just are not a lot of houses that fit a very narrow window um, uh, with those parameters. Um, the Mendez Montero House is a Housing Authority Development, um, and they are moving through the process, um, they're at the stage now of, um, trying to secure the state financing for the project. The, and then open space, the Russell Mills Land Conservation Project, so that has closed, so, um, that um, transaction has uh, taken place, I believe, I think the only thing that we were, are waiting for to close is we'll get a copy of the recorded uh, conservation restriction. And once we get that, we release the last ten percent of the funds. Um, and upon again, it playground, uh, that's a project uh, in process now, I think folks see that now that the weather has uh, cleared, um, they're, um, they're starting to install the playground equipment, so I suspect in about another month or forty-five days or so, very likely they will have expended and completed that project, so. Um, looks like probably several of these are really closing, um, soon and certainly through the summer.
Excellent, um, one of the things that, you know, and, and, and this is I think part of it, what needs to be said is that last paragraph in your, in your report, and that's the community investment, so I, I, if you mind, I, I, I will read this because I think it's very important, um, that everybody listening and also get reported as to what, you know, everybody sees, well, what the CPC does, what's the CPA and, and how the funds are, what are the funds, so this is a synopsis of, of the program. It said, as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty, more than thirteen point two million dollars in CPA funds have been invested through eighty separate project awards, representing fifty-three separate projects. This investment includes approximately two point six million for historical preservation, two point four million for housing and eight point three million for open space, including agricultural preservation, recreation and preservation of natural resources. At the close of twenty twenty, eighty-seven percent of the water funds have been expended. In addition to the direct investment of CPA funds, CPA-funded projects leveraged more than twenty-two million from other private and public sources. To date, CPA-funded projects represented an estimated thirty-five point two million investment in the Dartmouth community, and I think that needs to be said because that's not really, that's not general knowledge, you know, people, people know the project, they know something's come in, but the overall picture that needs to be addressed more and to be honest with you, that's a significant amount of money, um, that this town has invested in itself. And I, and I, that's very important, so, um, and I think that needs to be touted more. Um, um, at least, eh, eh, you know, it, it needs to be touted more by, by the town, so, and I think, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Sean, Sean, uh, buddy, I've been listening to you make these presentations for years and they're so, they're so damn professional and you're having a lot of enthusiasm and the passion for what you do and you're an incredible resource to this town and I've said it before and I'll say it again, you do one heck of a job for us. So much appreciated, thank you, buddy.
Sean's right, though, I'm a little long-winded sometimes.
All right.
It's only from experience, buddy, but you know I love you.
Yeah, I do.
Buddy, it's worth it. Between you and Sean, John, we can, we can, we can have a four-hour meeting for sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's all, all relative information.
Absolutely.
All right, any board members have any other questions or, buddy?
I, I just wanna thank Buddy, every year you, you cease to amaze me. Your, your energy is, is, is always out there and I must say, um, people, um, when, if you ever see Buddy walking around town, thank him.
Yeah, thank you, um, you know, I will take, um, Sean, as you're describing kind of this, this does get lost, I mean, we filed the annual report, but that's probably not something that people kind of search out. Um, I think what I'll, what I may do with, with treating your comment as a suggestion is, you know, we do a town meeting packet, um, that provides a little bit of history in the beginning. Um, but maybe we ought to include some excerpts from that annual report, something, just even that paragraph is probably an important thing for people to understand and
Right, great idea.
I'll talk to the committee about that.
Great, excellent, thank you, buddy.
Appreciate your support, thank you all.
Thank you, buddy, you're welcome.
Sean, that was a great idea to read that paragraph, thanks for doing that.
Some things, sometimes things need to be said.
Yep.
All right, next item on the agenda is the applicant for Board of Public Works. Um, did Mr. LaBelle say he would appear or? Hmm, okay.
Uh, I can check, I didn't hear that he would not be here, we sent out the notifications.
Okay, um, yeah, why don't you check, we'll take the next one, um, actually, we should make him wait longer, but uh, applicant for the Board of Appeals, the alternate, we have an applicant, uh, Attorney Walter P. Farrier. Uh, Mr. Farrier.
Good evening, Sean, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, I, you can't see me?
Yeah, we see you.
I'm the old man in the mountain.
Yeah, you look like Ernest Hemingway.
I wish I was Ernest Hemingway.
All right, so you've
Oh, Stanley Mickelson.
Correct.
Well, nobody's that old.
Correct, you should look that good.
All right, so we have a, we have a space and alternate on the Board of Appeals and of course, we have your resume on file. Board's pleasure?
Motion to I wanna ask Walter a question. Walter. Um, yes, we really appreciate anybody and everybody that wants to help the town out, but any reason, uh, any particular reason why you picked this position?
Well, I didn't pick the position, I uh, actually had a, a few people in town ask me that there was an opening. And I've been trying to get involved with the town for quite some time, uh, you know, I, I was a selectman for ten years. Before that, I s- uh, served on the Recreation Commission for three years and I was an Assistant District Attorney for four years, so I, I've been involved with town government, uh, Bristol County Government and I, actually, I'm, uh, I'm a little bit older than, uh, Stanley Mickelson, so I said I really would like to give back, uh, to the town that I grew up in and all my kids are here and my grandkids are here and I really would like to stay involved in the town and I think the Board of Appeals is a very important board to help, uh, the average citizen or people that want relief from uh, bylaws, uh, e- et cetera.
Thank you, thanks Walter, appreciate your time, by the way.
Thank you.
Board's pleasure.
Motion to appoint.
Second. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, was being distracted by waving goodbye here by my, uh, by my mother.
Who made the motion? Said motion to appoint.
You did, Stan?
Yep.
Second by?
Me.
Okay, Mr. Haron. All right, uh, on the motion, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor. Congratulations, Mr. Farrier.
Thanks, Walter.
Sorry, I'm, excuse me.
Thank you and good night.
Congratulations, Attorney Farrier.
Thank you.
I know you guys like to have, make sure you have that sheepskin.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay, all right, did, uh, we get any, do we hear back from, uh, Ron?
No, I, um, I was texting Christina Melanie to see if they had heard that he wouldn't be here.
Okay.
Have her back.
Well, I'll be honest with you, um, I, 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 I would like to get this appointment done today because, you know, I don't think we're gonna find a more qualified person to be on the DPW Board, um, in this town completely. With the exception of maybe, you know, Dave Hickox, but, um, so, eh, when the I, I, I was extremely, uh, pleased to see, uh, Ron's, um, application for this position now for, for people out there, um, who may not know, uh, Ron LaBelle, Ron LaBelle was the, uh, former director or former superintendent of the New Bedford, uh, Department of Infrastructure or the, or department, uh, New Bedford's version of the DPW, he was also a water supervisor. Um, and, uh, he had a forty-three-year career with the city in New Bedford, um, so I think that would, bless you, I think that's, um, I think that's more than enough to, uh, to, uh, to get, to garner his appointment, so, uh, board pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by
Can I just make a comment, uh?
Hold on, let me just get the, let me get the, motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. Haron, on the motion, Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
No, you wanted to say something.
Oh, no, I'm, I thought you were asking, um, it, it's, it's amazing to, to see the, the time and energy this man's has put in, uh, with New Bedford forty-three years, he's, uh, he's been a, a resident in the town for forty-three years. Um, and to offer his, his, his ability to, to understand what goes on in the DPW is overwhelming, he is like, he fell out of the tree without breaking his leg, thankfully. Thank you, Mr. LaBelle, for, for your interest in helping the town of Dartmouth.
Yep. Anyone else? Mr. Gracie?
Yeah, I just wanna echo that, I, we're very lucky to have him step forward.
Yes, very much so, uh, okay, on the motion, Mr. Tattlebaum.
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes enthusiastically, yes. So, just notify Mr. LaBelle and that way he can get sworn.
I'd be happy if he can be in on the May tenth meeting, just for an introduction.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Mr. Jim?
Mr. Mickles, uh, Mr. Tattlebaum?
We, we now have a, an impressive new group, brand new. There's a lot going on in the town in far the DPW is concerned and I would like to think that, um, that, uh, this may be the kind of jump-off point we really needed in an important, such an important department and I'd like to think that we schedule something as early as possible to, I mean, talk to the, talk to the group and, um, and set, maybe set some direction and see what's going on because, uh, uh, this is, uh, incredibly important and we now have a, quite a group to take advantage of.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's good, I know, um, I had discussions with Mr. McGinnis about see if we can get a, um, an outside consultant, I know Frank doesn't like consultants per se, but I think at this point in time where we have um, we need somebody to take a look at the operations and how we can uh, streamline the operations in the DPW and see if there's any redundancies that need to be eliminated so that we can provide a better service to our, to our residents on all ends of the DPW, then that's through wastewater, that's through water. Um, you know, uh, trash pickup and, and, and roads. I know, um, there, the town has invested somewhat heavily in, in roads in the past few years by additional funds and, and, but there are, you know, when you're talking over two hundred miles uh, of roadway in, in the town, there's a lot of roads that need to be addressed. And there are some significant roads, um, and neighborhoods that need to be, uh, taken a look at, so one of the things that, um, we need to do is, is to take a look at the operations, I wanna also include in that operations, the, um, the street um, list of, of, um, that Dave Hickox had presented, I think the last time was maybe a year and a half ago, if not two years ago as to their priorities as, into going through what, what listing, uh, you know, to, to do so that, cause that's important because a lot of the people are, um, you know, talking about, you know, when is my road gonna get done and, you know, we try to, to concentrate. When you tell somebody that, you know, your road is, 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 is important, but it's also more important to maintain the existing roads. Um, you know, the ones that aren't in bad shape, um, to keep them in good shape so that we're not putting more money into their rehab. And I think that's, that needs to be discussed a little bit further.
My, my, my point is also is that you have this mountains of experience. Uh, and why, why not take advantage of, um, talking to them early on so that we can set a path that, without being, um, being, uh, wasting our time and, and get, get going from the get-go because, um, there's, there's a, there's been a it's really important and if we do find a consultant who can help us organize that as well, great, but more importantly, let's take advantage of all experience here and set a tone for that department. It is an enterprise fund, they do have a board, but you know, with, our jo- goal as a leader in the, of Select Board is to get these people in the room together and talk to them and help make decisions. It is their committee, it's their enterprise fund, but, um, we, we, we need to show some leadership to get, uh, get the, uh, right path.
You know, I mean, we'll never, we'll never eliminate the complaints, but if we can reduce them, that's even better, Mr. Gracie.
Yeah, I just want for the record, I just wanna point out that I, I have never said I don't like consultants, it always depends on the situation and what, what we use them for.
No benefits either, Frank.
That's right.
Okay.
That's one reason.
I stand corrected, we'll have a taciturn, we'll have a taciturn affectionate consultants by Mr. Gracie.
No big words here.
All right, uh, that takes care of new business, old business, do we have anything?
Uh, no new updates.
Okay, all right, minutes, uh, we have the minutes of March twenty-second and April fifth.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Gracie, seconded by Mr. Mickelson, on the motion, any questions? All right, Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
And Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor, okay. Uh, information, we have Paper Shredding Day, which is on May first, um, it's at the DPW, the Highway Department at nine seventy-six Russell Mills Road, from the hours of nine to twelve in the af- in the, um, noon time. Um, there is some limitations as to the number of, uh, boxes you can bring. Uh, but, uh, it is a two-box limit, uh, they never said what size of the box, so, uh, so if you have a big box, then if you have two of them, that's even better, that's a good time to, um, to get rid of, uh, your stuff. We also have Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Day at the Crepo Hill Landfill on May fifteenth, from eight-thirty to noon. Um, for more information, you can visit the, uh, Greater New Bedford, um, Management District, um, dot org, it's at GNBRRM District dot org. Um, Ever Source has sent their, uh, annual summer notice that they'll be working on, uh, tree, tree clearing and along the, uh, the right-of-way that runs through the entire town. Um, does anybody have anything else to bring up at this time? Okay, one thing that I would like to do is I'd like to have on the next agenda is I want to have a discussion on the cable uh, cable committee, um, the, uh, I believe our contract with, uh, Comcast is up, but I'd like to go a little further with the cable committee, so I like to think about
I have that, I have that on there.
Okay, great, um, purpose, because one of the things, I know we were at some point in time, we were talking about whether or not infrastructure and it was kinda curious that the Haven has started to look into their own, um, Wi-Fi, for all intents and purposes. So maybe that's something that we can look at too, and expound upon it. It is very limited as to what the town can do with the contract with, with Comcast, but I just don't want this committee to sit and wallow on the contract. I'd like them to go a little further and a little deeper. So that's something that we can do. On that, anybody have anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Harren, seconded by?
Me.
Mr. Gracie. On the motion, any questions? Being none. Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Harren?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Chair votes in favor, eight-twenty-one. All right, good night, everybody, and thank you, everybody, for listening in.
Good job, Sean.